Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats. Please take your seats.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our March 2025 Full Council Meeting. Tonight's meeting is being held in City Council Chambers and is being streamed live on City 12 TV, as well as City Council's YouTube and Facebook pages. We can also continue to post meeting information and materials on the city's website. The meeting will now come to order, and I ask Clerk Washington to call the roll.
Councilmember Gruber, Councilmember Lightfoot.
Present, ma'am.
Councilmember Lupien.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Monroe.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Vice President Harris.
Here.
President Melendez.
Here.
Thank you.
So before we begin our business today, I know all of us here on City Council and throughout the Rochester community are thinking of yesterday's incident related to a 15-year-old student from the School of the Arts who tragically passed away from her injuries. Our thoughts and prayers are with the student, their family, their friends, and peers during this incredibly difficult time. The well-being of our students, our young people, is of the utmost importance. And I encourage anyone struggling with mental health challenges to seek support and remind our community that resources are indeed available, including the Suicide and Crisis Lifeline at 988 and City Pick Team, Person in Crisis Team, through 211. This heartbreaking loss reminds us of the urgent need to support one another, to listen and to ensure that no young person feels alone. I encourage everyone listening today to reach out to a young person in your lives, a child, a grandchild, niece, nephew, mentee, and tell them that they are loved. And there are people all around them and all throughout this city who care for them. I ask the room to please join me in a moment of silence to remember her, to stand in solidarity with her family and friends, and to reaffirm our commitment to prioritizing mental health and compassion in our schools and in our neighborhoods. Thank you. Councilmember Monroe, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? At this time, I'd like to invite my colleagues to the podium for tonight's recognitions. So tonight, like every council night, we are hosting our recognition ceremony. We're going to start with the World of Inquiry Basketball Team. Can the coaches and athletes please come up to the front? So I don't know if there's any council members that hoop a little bit, but I think Gruber might here and there. But we got some hoopers up here, so there might be some challenges here. But I want to first congratulate all of you for your effort and your teamwork to become the Section 5 B1 Champions. Class B Regional Champions, Class B State Semifinals, and 4th in New York State Ranking. You have made your school, family, and city proud. Congratulations on your accomplishment, and know that you have a strong support system around you, and you can do anything you set your mind to. And this is just the beginning for all that you will accomplish moving forward. I also want to congratulate all of the coaches. We want to congratulate you for your leadership and your passion for the team. A team is only as strong as their coaches are, and your commitment and help that you provided and support you provided to the World of Inquiry Basketball Team helped reach the pinnacle in their sport. I also want to point out that head coach Willie Mason was also named Coach of the Year for his dedication to this team. So let us all give them one round of applause as a team. Thank you. We'll take a moment for pictures. Next, we continue our celebration of the Divine Nine here in Rochester. As you all know, we have been recognizing our local chapters and providing a space at our ceremony to honor the work that they do. The Divine Nine plays a vital role by fostering leadership, community service, and advocacy, uplifting the Black community through education, mentorship, and social justice initiatives. These organizations provide a strong network for professional development, cultural preservation, and civic engagement, ensuring lasting impact and empowerment for future generations. I would like to call up the executive team from the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Can you please join us in the front? The Rochester City Council is honored to recognize the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We want to celebrate your achievements and all the hard work that you do proudly here in serving the Rochester community. This year marks 112 years of service to your community, and we are beyond grateful for the impact that you have in our neighborhoods. Rochester City Council would also like to further recognize you all for truly embodying your commitment to empowering all women and girls through service, advocacy, and action. And it just happens to be Women's History Month, so thank you all for making history here in Rochester. So we'll take a moment for pictures. Next, can we have the Executive Board members of the Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated? Please join us in the front. So first, the purple is fly, by the way. So we want to celebrate you for your achievements and all the hard work that you have invested proudly in serving the Rochester community. Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated is the first international fraternal organization founded on the campus of a historically Black college. Let's give a round of applause for that, too. You have brought strong influence and more than 100 years of commitment to uplift our people and our communities. You have a strong and effective force of men. You are a strong and effective force of men dedicated to its cardinal principle of manhood, scholarship, perseverance, and uplifting. Thank you all for your help to support our community and to improve the conditions here in the Rochester area. And we'll take a moment for pictures. So next, we move to celebrate Women's History Month. Women's History Month is a time to honor the trailblazers, pioneers, and everyday heroes whose contributions have shaped our communities, our nation, and our world. From the fight for equality to groundbreaking achievements in every field, women have been at the forefront of progress, resilience, and change. We cannot mention the progress made towards gender equality without also recognizing that today is Equal Pay Day. According to a 2024 report updated from the New York State Department of Labor, for every dollar earned by white, non-Hispanic men, Hispanic or Latina women earn approximately 58.4 cents. Black or African-American women earn about 65.4 cents. White women earn around 82.7 cents. And Asian women earn approximately 84.6 cents. These disparities highlight the compounded challenges faced by women of color in achieving pay equity. As we celebrate women today, let us also recommit to ensuring that every woman and girl has the opportunity to thrive, lead, and make history of her own, while also advancing equitable compensation for all. There are so many women in our community that are leading incredible work, and it's my pleasure to turn it over to Vice President of City Council, the Shay Dee Harris, to recognize the amazing women we have here today.
Thank you, President Melendez. Women's History Month is the celebration of strength, courage, and unstoppable spirit of women who have broken barriers and opened doors for future generations. As we reflect on their achievements, let us create a space to honor, reflect, and be inspired by the tremendous contributions women have made throughout history and continue to make today. We must continue to build a world where every woman's potential is limitless, and every girl knows that she can reach for the stars. Progress is not automatic. The fight for equality is ongoing, and we all must be a part of it. We must continue to push boundaries, challenge inequities, open more doors for women everywhere. The fight begins with equal pay for all. I said the fight begins with equal pay for all. And more opportunities for women to become leaders, business owners, and trailblazers.
I'm Councilmember Mary Lupien. If we are serious about closing the racial and gender wage gap, if we believe that every worker deserves equal pay for equal work, then we need to stop relying on good intentions and start taking concrete systemic steps. That starts with salary transparency. Employers should be required to post salary ranges on all job listings. When workers know what the pay is, they can advocate for themselves. And when pay scales are hidden, inequity thrives. Second, employers must ban the practice of asking previous salary history. This is one of the most common ways inequities get baked in and passed on from job to job. Women, Black, and Brown workers, and other marginalized groups are too often underpaid in one job, and then that lower wage follows them. We have the power to stop that cycle. Third, every large employer, including public employers like the City of Rochester, should be conducting regular pay equity audits. That means looking at pay across race, gender, and job classification to identify and correct unjustified gaps. And not just doing audits behind closed doors, but sharing the findings with employees and the public and creating timelines for corrective action. And lastly, we need stronger oversight and enforcement mechanisms. These policies just can't exist on paper. They need to be monitored, and violations need to have consequences. Pay equity isn't a mystery. It's not a question of whether we can do it. It's a question of whether we have the political will. If we center justice, if we listen to workers, and if we act boldly, we can build a local economy where everyone is paid fairly for the value that they bring.
This year, for Women's History Month, we are celebrating and highlighting women-owned businesses in the City of Rochester. Can all of our business owners come up to the front? In celebration of Women's History Month, we recognize and honor your outstanding contributions to business community and as women-owned enterprise. Each of you play a vital role in shaping our economy and communities. Your dedication, vision, and leadership inspires others and contribute to the empowerment of women in business, and especially the City of Rochester. Women-owned businesses are not only a powerful driver of economic growth, but they are also a central part of shaping a more inclusive, innovative, and equitable business landscape. Supporting and celebrating these businesses strengthens the communities and paves the way for a brighter, more equitable future for all. Together, each of you are inspiring future generations of women to lead and build and break barriers. As we celebrate achievements and accomplishments of women throughout history, we commend your commitment to innovation, resilience, and excellence. Thank you for all of your investments to our city, and happy Women's History Month. Now we'll take some pictures.
All right, finally, we wanted to honor one of our own, Patty Utaro, with a proclamation for retiring from being the City of Rochester's Library Director. Patty, can you join us in the front? So first and foremost, Patty has worked for the City of Rochester. I just happened to learn this. Patty has worked for the City of Rochester as long as I've been alive. No shade, Patty. But 38 years for the City of Rochester, which is a huge commitment to our community. And your commitment, Patty, your commitment to literacy, access to knowledge, and the role of the public library in our community has been unwavering. Throughout your tenure at the library, you have shared the vision that libraries are more than just buildings filled with books. They are the heart of a neighborhood, providing access to knowledge, resources, and opportunities for all. You've helped usher in crucial library programs and services, including the Archive of Black History, the Shoulders to Stand On LGBTQ Archive, and the Central Library's Insight Center. You've also worked to eliminate overdue book fees, helping to reduce barriers.
You've also worked to eliminate overdue book fees, helping to reduce barriers for hundreds of children and families in our community who had stopped visiting our city libraries. You helped bridge the digital divide during the pandemic by implementing the MiFi program for residents throughout the city, something that council was glad to fund and support in those efforts. Your leadership, passion, and vision has left a lasting impact on generations of readers, students, families, and neighbors across our city, and moved forward libraries as hubs for learning, job training, digital access, and cultural enrichment. Libraries bridge gaps, foster connections, and empower individuals to succeed, and it is because of your leadership that we've been able to move it forward as quickly as we have been able to. Whether offering a safe space for students, supporting entrepreneurs, or ensuring equitable access to information, libraries are essential in building stronger, more inclusive communities. And as you embark on your well-earned next chapter, we thank you for your tireless work within the Rochester Public Library and Monroe County Library Systems, and we wish you nothing but the best in your retirement. And we will turn over the podium to Patty, but we do have a proclamation which we will spare everyone from reading. But Patty, the floor is yours.
I wasn't expecting to have to say anything tonight, so I'm gonna wing it, you guys. It has been an honor. I'm gonna get emotional. But it's been an honor to serve with all of the people here and many others who sat in these seats over the last 18 years that I have been in my position. A former mayor once told me that he was not willing to culturally bankrupt the city by closing libraries or our centers. I see Dr. Green isn't here, but I wanted to say that as well. And again, I have felt very, very honored to work with administrations that understand the importance of libraries to the Rochester community and to our community at large. Right now, like many other service agencies, libraries are under fire at the federal level. I, you know, I expect that this administration and this council will stand behind our new library director and libraries within the region and within New York State to ensure that libraries don't close and that libraries continue to do all of the things that Miguel talked about. I'm very appreciative and honored to receive this proclamation, and I'm so thankful to having worked with all of you and with all of you. Thank you.
the opportunity to skirt out if you're not interested in the business of council, but you're also welcome to stay. So now we will move on to the approval of the minutes by Councilmember Gruber.
Resolve that the minutes of the regular meeting on February 25, 2025, be approved as published in the official sheets of the proceedings.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
The following documents are hereby directed to be received and filed. The mayor submits the following grant accounting quarterly report, second quarter, October 1 through December 31, 2024. The council submits disclosure of interest forms from Councilmember Monroe on introductory number 76, and Councilmember Gruber on introductory number 93.
Thank you. These documents will be received and filed. It is time for the presentation and reference of petitions. Are there any other -- and any other communications? Are there any petitions?
Yes. President Melendez, we have one petition to file with a clerk related to the creation of a community garden on Cross Avenue.
Thank you. Those documents will be received and filed. Chairperson Patterson, the Neighborhood Jobs and Housing Committee report, please.
Thank you. To the council, the Neighborhood Jobs and Housing Committee recommends for adoption the following entitled legislation. Introductory number 62, authorizing sale of real estate appropriating 2024-2025 Annual Action Plan funds and authorizing a grant agreement for the construction and sale of seven affordable single-family homes in the Beechwood neighborhood. Introductory number 63, amending ordinance number 2024-73 related to the Greater Rochester Habitat for Humanity By the Block Phase II Project. Introductory number 64, authorizing a lease agreement for 6892 Genesee Street. Introductory number 65, appropriating additional funds and amending the loan agreement for the Federal Street and Scattered Sites Affordable Housing Project. Introductory number 66, authorizing appropriation from the 2024-2025 Annual Action Plan, a loan agreement, and a payment in lieu of taxes agreement for the Los Flamboyes Affordable Housing Project. Introductory number 67, resolution approving an appointment to the Board of Examiners of Stationary Engineers. The Neighborhood Jobs and Housing Committee recommends the following entitled legislation to be held in committee. Introductory number 68, authorizing a lease agreement for the Port Terminal Building. This report is respectfully submitted by Mitch -- Councilmembers Mitch Gruber, Kimberly Smith, LaShay D. Harris -- sorry, Vice President LaShay D. Harris, President Miguel A. Melendez Jr., and myself, Michael A. Patterson.
Thank you, Chairperson Patterson. That report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. Introductory number 62, authorizing the sale of real estate appropriating 2024-25 Annual Action Plan funds and authorizing a grant agreement for the construction and sale of seven affordable single-family homes in the Beechwood neighborhood. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 63, amending ordinance number 2024-73 relating to the Greater Rochester Habitat for Humanity By the Block Phase II Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 64, authorizing a lease agreement for 68 to 92 Genesee Street. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 65, appropriating additional funds and amending the loan agreement for the Federal Street and Scattered Sites Affordable Housing Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 66, authorizing an appropriation from the 2024-25 Annual Action Plan, a loan agreement, and a payment in lieu of taxes agreement for the Los Flamboyanas Housing Project. At this time, I just want to acknowledge that Mr. Albert Algarin is in the audience and has been instrumental in advocating for this project for some time and supporting the residents at Flamboyanas. And with that, I'll move to -- all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 67, resolution approving an appointment to the Board of Examiners of Stationary Engineers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Patterson, do you have a motion related to introductory number 68?
Yes, I'd like to offer a motion to discharge introductory number 68 from committee.
Move it.
It's been moved. So let's vote and second it. Let's vote on discharging introductory number 68 from committee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Any questions, comments, or concerns related to intro 68? Seeing none, we'll move to vote on introductory number 68. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Vice President Harris, the People, Parks, and Public Works Committee report, please.
Thank you, President Melendez. The People, Parks, and Public Works Committee recommends for adoption of the following entitled legislation. Introductory number 69, amending ordinance number 2024-83 relating to the Maplewood Park Playground Project. Introductory number 70, a bond ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York, authorizing issuance of $822,000 bonds of said city to finance the Maplewood Park Playground Project. Introductory number 71, authorizing agreement for the Maplewood Playground Project. Introductory number 72, authorizing agreement and appropriations for the rehabilitation of Andrews Street Bridge over the Genesee River Project. Introductory number 73, a resolution authorizing implementation of funding of costs of 100% of the state aid program eligible costs of Andrews Street over Genesee River Bridge replacement, which may be eligible for federal aid and/or state aid reimbursement for Bridge New York funds. Introductory number 74, a bond ordinance of City of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $3,93,000 bonds of said city to finance certain costs of hazardous sidewalk replacement program Northeast Quadrant Contract for 2025 Phase II. Introductory number 75, authorizing an agreement for the hazardous sidewalk replacement program Northeast Quadrant Contract 2025 Phase II. Introductory number 76, authorizing an intermunicipal agreement with the Town of Brighton related to chip seal and/or milling and paving of city streets adjacent to the Town of Brighton boundary. Introductory number 78, a bond ordinance of City of Rochester, New York, authorizing issuance of $460,000 bonds of said city to finance the cost of remedial investigation and implementation of the remedial action work plan for the environmental contamination of the former vacuum oil refinery site. Introductory number 79, authorizing agreement for implementing remedial action work plan for the former vacuum oil refinery site. Introductory number 80, authorizing intermunicipal agreement with Seabreeze Water District. Introductory number 81, authorizing agreement for the drinking water quality compliance monitoring. Introductory number 82, authorizing inventory agreement with Humane Society of Rochester and Monroe County. Introductory number 83, amending the 2024-25 budget and authorizing agreements for park maintenance pilot programs. Introductory number 84, appropriating funds for geothermal capability study for the inner-loop north transformation project area. The People, Parks, and Public Works Committee recommends the following entitled legislation. Introductory number 77, amending the official map for Bull's Head Revitalization Street Improvement Project. This report was respectfully submitted by Councilmember Willie J. Lightfoot, Councilmember Mary Lupien, Councilmember Michael A. Patterson, President Miguel A. Melendez Jr., and myself. This report will be received, filed, and published. Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries. So thank you, Vice President Harris. That report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. So introductory number 69, amending ordinance number 2024-83 relating to the Maplewood Park Playground Project. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Gruber.
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe.
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson.
This is intro 69.
No, it's 70 is the roll call. Bond ordinance.
You might be correct. My apologies, it's not a roll call. The next one's a roll call, but so we will scratch that from the... So, Court Counsel, can you help us out here? Continue the roll.
Patterson, Councilmember Patterson, Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Harris.
Yes.
President Melendez.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Introductory number 70, a bond ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $822,000 bonds of said city to finance the Maplewood Park Playground Project. This one actually requires a roll call.
Councilmember Gruber.
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe.
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Harris.
Yes.
President Melendez.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Introductory number 71, authorizing an agreement for the Maplewood Park Playground Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Intro 72, authorizing agreements and appropriation for the rehabilitation of the Andrews Street Bridge over the Genesee River Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 73, a resolution authorizing the implementation and funding of the costs of 100% of the state aid program eligible costs of the Andrews Street over Genesee River Bridge replacement, which may be eligible for federal aid and/or state aid or reimbursement from Bridge New York funds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 74, a bond ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $3,93,000 bonds of said city to finance certain costs of the hazardous sidewalk replacement program Northeast Quadrant Contract 2025 Phase II. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Gruber.
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe.
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Harris.
Yes.
President Melendez.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Introductory number 75, authorizing agreement for the hazardous sidewalk replacement program Northeast Quadrant Contract 2025 Phase II. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 76, authorizing an intermunicipal agreement with the Town of Brighton relating to chip seal and/or milling and paving of city streets adjacent to the Town of Brighton boundary. So there is a disclosure on this item, and Councilmember Monroe is employed by the Town of Brighton, so she must recuse herself from deliberation and the vote. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And one abstention. Motion carries. Introductory number 77, amending the official map for the Bull's Head Revitalization Street Improvement Project.
Mr. President?
Council Vice President?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Through -- I just actually would like to ask a question, if it's okay. To the administration, through the president, I just wanted to just put on record, it's more of a comment, that when you -- I noticed the map has some changes, and thank you, by the way, to the administration for providing the map. There's changes to the road and how it goes when you make changes to Brown Street and some of the other streets over there. And when those hard changes are made, once we're finished with the whole project, please make sure there's signage, because what happens in the past in the city, when you change the direction of the street, people like me that are blind at night tend to continue on that path without realizing the street has changed. So just want to put on record that we need to make sure it's signage and enough notification to the neighbors.
Great, thank you. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 78, a bond ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of $460,000 bonds of said city to finance the cost of the remedial investigation and the implementation of remedial action work plan for the environmental contamination of the former vacuum oil refinery site. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Gruber.
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Monroe. Councilmember Monroe.
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Harris.
Yes.
President Melendez.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Introductory number seventy-nine, authorizing an agreement for the implementa- for implementing a remedial action work plan for the former vacuum oil refinery site. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number eighty, authorizing an intermunicipal agreement with the Seabreeze Water District. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number eighty-one, authorizing a mandatory agreement for drinking water quality compliance monitoring. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number eighty-two, authorizing a mandatory agreement with the Humane Society of Rochester and Monroe County. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number eighty-three, amending the twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-five budget and authorizing agreements for parks maintenance pilot programs. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number eighty-four, appropriating funds for a geothermal capability study for the Inner Loop North Transformation Project area. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Chairperson Gruber, the Budget, Finance, and Governance Committee report, please.
To the council, the Budget, Finance, and Governance Committee recommends for adoption the following entitled legislation. Introductory number eighty-five, authorizing an amatory agreement related to the Home Prosper Program. Introductory number eighty-six, authorizing a grant agreement and appropriation for the Positive Rent Reporting Program. Introductory number eighty-seven, authorizing an agreement to service the children's savings account and other asset building programs. Introductory number eighty-eight, authorizing agreement relating to social media screening services. Introductory number eighty-nine, authorizing an agreement related to CPR slash A- and AED and first aid training. Introductory number ninety-two, authorizing an agreement for the twenty-twenty-five Baldwin Richardson Foods Frederick Douglass HBCU Football Classic. Introductory number ninety-three, amending the twenty-four dash twenty-five budget and appropriating funds to support a crisis support program at the Central Library. This report was respectfully submitted by councilmembers Stanley Martin, Bridgette Monroe, Vice President Harris, President Melendez, and myself, Mitch Gruber.
Thank you Chairperson Gruber. That report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. Introductory number eighty-five, authorizing an amatory agreement related to the Home Prosper Program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number eighty-six, authorizing a grant agreement and appropriation for the Positive Rent Reporting Program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number eighty-seven, authorizing an agreement to service the children's savings account and other asset building programs. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number eighty-eight, authorizing agreement relating to social media screening services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number eighty-nine, authorizing an agreement related to the CPR, AED, and first aid training.
Mr. President?
Yes, Council Vice President, the floor is yours.
I'd like to make a comment and actually, um, I'd like to just make comment that the mayor and- Mayor Evans and County Executive Adam Bello is working on, um, moving our city to a heart-safe city, and this is initiative that's- that's supporting that, and I'd like to ask that if the mayor would have a few words about that.
No, I just want to say, um, we've enjoyed working with you, uh, Vice President Harris on this, and the goal is- is to make, uh, Ro- Rochester Monroe County a, um, heart-help city, and, uh, in order to do that, we have to have a percentage of every single resident, um, have, uh, some type of exposure to CPR slash AED training, um, which really isn't that hard, so it's a- it's a very monumental goal, uh, but we have some innovative and creative ways that we are gonna, um, gonna do this, um, and I think that, um, we're already, uh, set up for success, I think, because we do have so many healthcare workers here and so many people who are currently, um, trained in, um, CPR, uh, and- and first aid. So, more to come. There'll- there'll be a lot more, um, uh, that the community will hear about, about, um, events, um, places where people can go and get training. Um, the goal will be to have this in every rec center, libraries, here at City Hall, airport, uh, games, so, um, it's- it's a very, very ambitious goal in order for us to get, um, to get, um, certified, and I think the percentage of people that we have to expose to this in the county is something like a couple of, a hundred, how many is it? Fifteen percent. So fifteen percent of the county population, um, and we'll have a way of counting that to show that. But once we're able to show that, show that, um, Rochester Monroe County will be, uh, certified as a, um, heart, uh, health community.
Alright, thank you for that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number ninety-two, authorizing an agreement for the twenty-twenty-five Baldwin Richardson Foods Frederick Doug- Douglas HBCU Football Classic. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number ninety-three, amending the twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-five budget and appropriating funds to support a crisis support program at the Central Library. Uh, there is a disclosure for this item by Councilmember Gruber, um, as he's the late liaison to the public library, but he's only required to disclose the information and may participate in discussion in the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Chairperson Lightfoot, the Public Safety Committee report, please.
Uh, thank you Mr. President. To the council, the Public Safety Committee recommends for adoption the following entitled legislation. Introductory number ninety, authorizing an intermunicipal agreement with the Monroe County amending the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget for traffic and crowd control services as amended. Introductory number ninety-one, authorizing a mandatory agreement for case management software for the Police Accountability Board. This was respectfully submitted by Councilmember Dr. Mitch Gruber, Councilperson Mary Lupien, Councilperson Stanley Martin, Councilperson Bridgette Monroe, Councilperson Michael Patterson, Councilperson Kim Smith, Councilperson Vice President LaShay Harris, and Council President Miguel A. Melendez Jr., and myself, Willie J. Lightfoot.
Thank you Chairperson Lightfoot. That report will be received, filed, and published, and we will proceed with the vote. Introductory number ninety, authorizing an intermunicipal agreement with Monroe County and amending the twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-five budget for traffic and crowd control services as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Councilmember Gruber.
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Yes.
Councilmember Lupien.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
No.
Councilmember Monroe.
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Vice President Harris.
Absolutely.
President Melendez.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Introductory number ninety-one, authorizing a mandatory agreement for case management software for the Police Accountability Board. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So I have just one highlight that I want to share, um, and actually, I- I invite, uh, Councilmember Patterson to- to share this with the community, um, regarding an event coming up here at City Hall.
Thank you President Melendez. So tomorrow, the City of Rochester, the Rochester City Council, in collaboration with Northern Health, will be hosting a diabetes wake-up call here in the atrium. Why are we doing this? Well, as reported by Common Ground Health, eighty-two percent of the adults who have been diagnosed with diabetes in the Greater Rochester area live in the City of Rochester, specifically and particularly in the inner-city neighborhoods. I am a diabetic, and I have been one since twenty thirteen. This is a challenging disease, and it's scary when you're first diagnosed, and it takes time to learn and understand how to live with this, and, but, if you don't take it seriously, it will take you out. We don't want folks to be afraid, but we understand that fear is a natural response to this diagnosis. Please, come on out. Just listen and learn. You have a community that wants to help you, that wants to support you, that doesn't want you to lose any function or any capacity. So, if you've got a family member, bring them on down. If you've got a friend, bring them on down. If they won't come, you come on down and get this information and take it back home. Thank you. Oh, and we'll be here from six PM to eight PM tomorrow in the atrium.
And I will second Councilmember Patterson on this. Um, you know, myself, just to put a personal story out there, I was diagnosed with diabetes in twenty twenty-three. I found out in July of twenty twenty-three. Um, you know, for a while, it was a- a wake-up call for me, and, um, you know, I ignored the signs for a long time, um, and I went through a period of denial, but it's important that everyone in the community takes this very seriously, um, because, you know, this is something that is manageable but irreversible. Um, so for everyone who is in the community, that eighty percent plus that we're talking about, make sure that you are paying attention, that you're getting checked, that you're doing what you can to change your habits and- and to educate yourself on the opportunities that are available in this community to support you, and I think the event here in City Hall will be a great first step and opportunity for- for community members. So again, six to eight PM here on the twenty-sixth, which is tomorrow night.
Oh, and I forgot to mention, food will be provided, so you don't have to come here at six o'clock and be hungry.
Yes, healthy samples of different things that you may never have thought you would be eating, but there's opportunities that- that will be here.
Mr. Mayor?
I was just gonna say, I looked at the menu. It's, we ordered healthy stuff, so.
Okay, um, I have Councilmember Lupien.
Uh, yeah, this question is for, I think, the mayor and the police chief. Um, I understand with our sanctuary city legislation that the police will not collaborate or assist ICE, Immigrations and Customs Enforcement, but what about other federal agencies having to do with immigration, um, like HSI and ERO, the Homeland Security Investigation and Enforcement and Removal Unit?
Um, I- I don't know the answer to that question, but I would ask that you get that in writing, Patterson, so that way we won't be guessing or doing any of that stuff, I'm assuming, but again, to be safe and not just get something out of pocket, we weren't prepared for that question today. Let's get that in writing and get that to all of them.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Martin, followed by Councilmember Lightfoot.
Yes, so, um, over the last few months, um, I've heard from a lot of constituents about issues that matter to them, um, and in April, we are going to be holding public hearings focused on issues around public safety, animal services, LGBTQ, uh, community services, um, and housing. Uh, the hearings will be on Wednesday, April ninth, from five to eight PM, and also on April sixteenth, from five to eight PM, um, and we've been working with our staff, um, and organizations who are coming up with solutions to work on these issues, to hold these hearings, to inform our priorities as a council. So, please attend. It's open to all. Uh, share- share your testimony and inform us about how we can address these issues effectively.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Yes, thank you Mr. President. Just wanted to say, uh, if folks were paying attention earlier when we, uh, acknowledged Patty from the library, uh, and her time, uh, that she's had servicing our city and our community, uh, she, um, Mr. President said that she had been serving as long as he's been on this planet. Well, he has a birthday coming up on Sunday, so if you do the math, you probably could figure out how old he's gonna be this Sunday, so I just wanted to say happy birthday, Mr. President, uh, thank you for your service.
Thank you for that. Thank- thanks for putting me on this call, but thank you for that. I appreciate it. Um, Councilmember Lupien, and then we will adjourn.
I just wanted to mention, um, I didn't want this council meeting to go by without mentioning the five-year anniversary of the death of Daniel Prude, which was on March twenty-third. Um, Daniel Prude was killed by officers of our police department, and those officers are still on the street, and we are still suffering, our Police Accountability Board is still struggling to get access to information to be able to adjudicate cases. And so I urge the community to get behind the Police Accountability Board. Um, the city actually sued the Police Accountability Board to stop them from releasing their findings, which is a key way that we can hold our police department accountable. So I wanted to raise that up, especially on the anniversary of his death.
Alright, so with no further business, we stand adjourned.